Okay, we're at five thirty. So I'll call the meeting to order. I'd like to start by acknowledging that this meeting is respectfully held on the traditional territory of the Saicas First Nation, on whose land we live, work and play. There's an agenda circulated. Would you, somebody like to move adoption? Seconder? All in favor? Carried? So we'll move straight down to council and committee and start with five point one drought discussion. Well, hand it over to Walrus.
Yeah. Thank you for having me, everyone. My name is Philip Crosskov. I'm the Senior License Authorization Specialist or Senior Water Officer, based out of the Prince George Whittick Building. I'm responsible for the Ammonika region. So I kind of lead the authorizations team in the water management program. One of the things we do is help manage for drought. So during periods of drought, we're out there monitoring, making recommendations at a provincial level, what level drought, to drought levels, et cetera. So I was asked to come and speak a little bit about drought, about snow conditions, about precip, and then a little bit about the provincial drought management plans, specifically sections four and five. So I'll touch on some of that. I purposely kept the presentation fairly short and high level. I want to open it up to conversations. So if you do have any questions, if you want to discuss anything as I'm going through it, please stop me and we can do so. And let's go on from there. So really high level about drought levels and indicators and how they've changed over time, a little bit about our current snowpack. The most recent drought bulletin, or the snowpack bulletin was put out on the second of February. So I can give you an update on that about precipitation or, you know, hopes for precipitation this year. And we can go over what the drought levels were throughout 2023 and how that leads us into, you know, to potential drought conditions in 2024. We can go over a little bit about drought response roles and responsibilities. So this includes provincial response and response from local authorities and First Nations, and then just open it for discussions and planning. But like I said, stop me at any time to do so. A lot of text on this one. So the first little bit was previously, we were on a four level drought. Love, we had, there were four drought levels, one to four. One represents fairly normal levels where four is kind of an extreme. Management goes ramps up the higher you go. And then there's different methods of actually kind of, you know, indicating what level you're at. That leads us to that second part. Early in the season or early spring, a lot of our drought levels in the forecasting rely on snowpack data. And side I've got here pretty soon, we'll kind of go over what the current snow levels are and then seasonal outlooks. Once the early season is considered over, we rely more on what the streams are actually flowing compared to normal and precipitation levels. So stream flows are seventy average and precipitation are thirty percentiles. This is what our current, all of our drought levels currently look like. It's a zero to five scale. Zero, consider it kind of a normal level. Five is an extreme. I'll show you what 2023 looked like and it was pretty severe across the province. It's one of the most severe droughts we've had on record. And it was a function of 2022, starting around August, became really, really dry. We lacked precipitation. That's when the drought kind of started. It progressed into 2023 and we're anticipating extending into 2024 as well. As you can see, zero to five, it ramps up. This is a special note, given the audience here. There are certain considerations, the higher you go, certain things that you do for as far as drought management. So if according to that drought plan, it describes like what the responses could be, the recommendations for it. For those of you that don't know, the B C drought information portal, which is at the bottom right of the screen here, is a great information resource. So during periods of drought or even now during the winter, you can go there, you can get links to what the snow bulletins are showing. You can get information about 2023 levels. You can get a lot of good information that inform kind of where we're going into 2024. And then as we're in drought, it's updated regularly. So this is what our current snow basin water index looks like as of February first, 2024, is released on the eighth. Provincially, we're at around sixty-one percent of normal, which doesn't look good, considering that 2023 is a bad drought year and our high level snowpack is severely affected. So everyone kind of knows that how snow melts is largely a reflection of not only climate during the spring, but rain on snow events, et cetera. So really like, we don't have a lot of indication of what like fresher conditions could be like at this point. We just have this early indicator that if it doesn't snow more, we don't get more precipitation, it's a higher likelihood of drought. So yeah, it's low right across the province. So as far as the twenty, these are the 2023 drought levels at a glance, the darker colors are worse than the lighter colors. As you can see, we went through this period in the spring where the levels were quite low until approximately June. It shifted from mid, early June, right until the fall. And especially in the Northeast, we have this continuance of drought right into the fall period and then propagated with low snowpack as well. So kind of increase in that risk moving forward. So it's a bad year for drought in 2023 and we're, all indicators point to it being high likelihood of drought in 2024. So that drought response plan describes roles and responsibilities dependent on level. It's a relationship between the regional, local levels, regional drought teams, provincial drought working group, all the way up to cabinet. There's roles and responsibilities described in that document. One of our largest roles would be, as I mentioned, to collect information to inform the provincial technical drought working group. We're active members in that and we would be the ones making recommendations, also based on recommendations and comments from River Forecast Center. Remember that when we're in periods of drought, a large part of our consideration is on not only precipitation that's being received, but also what the flows are like in the stream compared to normal. So it's all provincial effort as much as it is a regional effort and there's a lot of collaboration that occurs at that level, especially when you get to higher drought levels. So as described, it's kind of a regional level, provincial level, and then whenever we get to something like minister orders, et cetera, we also bring in natural resource officers. I think everyone's aware of some of the closures that occurred down south in the province. We want to avoid that kind of situation as much as possible. One of our plans for the Ammonika is early engagement. We've already started to meet with the local farmers in the area, try to understand how they managed for drought and were affected in 2023, how they're trying to change their plans and how they're considering the higher potential for drought in 2024, so lessen the impacts and to consider like how they can continue to use water, but under measures where they're conserving water and using as efficiently as possible and working with the province, working with the municipalities, working with each other, et cetera. It's that early engagement that's very important to us at this stage. It's really all we can do. We're anticipating drought. So it's about kind of informing people, building those relationships. So and if we do get into that period where we have severe concerns, it's not a surprise to anyone. We've started these conversations. We started them early. We've introduced ourselves and we're building those relationships. At a provincial level, there's a different kind of supports that are available. These orders are kind of a last case measure. When we get to those higher levels such as four and five, so the two highest levels for drought, there are options under the Water Sustainability Act where we can kind of close down watersheds or close down water use, which is what occurred down south in the province. These have economic impacts. They have impacts to people's livelihoods, to their crops, to their cattle operations, et cetera. And this is, these are decisions that aren't made lightly. We want to do everything we can to avoid those. But those tools do exist. They're very data intensive and we, quite honestly, we don't have that kind of information to support the use of these type of tools in an area like Vanderhoof right now. They're very, they would be data intensive to the fact that we would have to have something like a critical environment threshold, critical environmental needs threshold, actually identified for streams to know where there's triggers, where it would actually be cutting off use. We know that there are certain streams in the Vanderhoof area that naturally go dry. We know that there are certain areas that people just don't irrigate from because they're too low during, you know, later summer months anyway. And then luckily enough, a lot of people do irrigate out of larger systems, including the Natchaco here. So different types of protection orders. Down south, they use fish population protection orders, which is a ministerial order last year. As far as responsibilities from, for local authorities and First Nations, there are license holders. So they have, you would hold water licenses under the Water Sustainability Act to provide water as a water supplier. There, in the, in the drought scarcity document, it actually identifies like water restrictions, then different things that can be considered at that time, but there's no hard guidance. It's more soft guidance of what can be considered during risk level, different risk levels. So that's it within the British Columbia Drought and Water Scarcity Response Plan. And then there's also this dealing with drought handbook. That's a really good resource to have as well. So examples of response by drought level, we just picked one here, which is kind of level four, which is considered red. So it described what the level actually means and then suggested actions that could be included. Information bulletins could go out, early engagement, targeted regional media releases, for example, communication. Local governments could implement progressively stricter water restrictions, et cetera. At this stage, it's recommendations. A lot of non-regulatory approaches are described within that, which primarily revolve around water conservation, which I'm sure everyone's kind of aware of. So I just wanted to keep it super high level at that. Just as a quick summary, snow levels are obviously low. We don't know what, you know, what precipitation is going to be like. There are good guidance documents that highlight what recommendations based on different drought levels and describe those levels well. It is all about engagement, collaboration, relationship building for us. Just know that whenever we do get into a period of drought, we do have people kind of running around and there's also other agencies that do as well, including the Ministry of Agriculture and Food. And we're trying to engage with them as much as possible to collaborate our efforts and we will do so with the district as well. Stopping there, are there any questions, comments or concerns from what I've shown?
Rode by pump?
Yeah.
Controlled by, you know, human being, basically.
Yeah, so the District of Vanderhoof holds water licenses where they provide water to the municipality. Those water license regardless of their wells or take, or pump water from surface water, they're all hydrologic connected in the Natchaco.
Okay. Oh, is that regulated though? Just by?
Yeah, through the Water Sustainability Act. So they, there are water licenses that date back to, I think, the forties, forty-three or so. So it gives rights to municipality to provide water to people within them as well.
Who controls the farmers? If they have, if they're pumping?
They would hold individual water licenses unless they tie into that municipal system. Most of the farmers around here would hold their individual licenses, given the purpose of water use and the large volumes that they would need for their crops. Yeah.
Okay, go to Brian.
Yeah. Thanks for the presentation, Phil. So just to, for us, you know, I want to know how we would have our local government involved. Having a presentation is good and we know that we can say no sprinkling, starting in May. The issue becomes, yeah, I want to know how the health of the aquifer system is because it's pretty easy to judge that you're low on water when you have no water and streams in the creek. I mean, the river is, is low. But you know, if we're pumping out of an aquifer, like I haven't seen much data on how healthy the aquifer system is in our region. And you know, and I know we put a project together years ago that didn't get funded by government, but we wanted to map that out. Fort St. John had a pilot project up there where they mapped it using geoscience data. And we were just wondering if that's something that we could do here for looking at how the aquifers are.
Potentially, like, are you interested in like the aquifer that's connected in the Natchaco?
Yeah, I would think we'd want to see all of the aquifers that we have in this area and, and just to see the health of them, you know, because they're underneath us. Nobody sees whether it's, you know, if, you know, if it's a hundred feet deep or if it's a thousand feet deep. And I don't know whether we can map that or not. And I don't know if that falls under your bailiwick when we come to making a decision to, to put restrictions in. Is it based on the surface water or are we talking on the ground, like underneath the ground?
Yeah, so there, there are different things that are considered whenever making recommendations to the province regarding drought levels. And then you would use that to like inform your decisions. One of the things could be our observations from our groundwater monitoring sites. So I don't know if, you know, locally, but there's three, I think, three or four. Like provincial groundwater observation well, there's an observation well network across the province. And then there are three or four local wells here. That information is publicly available. And it's also considered like whenever we do get to these higher drought levels. That would, would be those, that information informs different aquifers though than the ones you're licensed for through the district. Your wells are shallow and adjacent to the Natchaco. So think of it almost like you're pulling right from the river itself. Yeah, I'm definitely not a hydrogeologist. We do have provincial hydrogeologists that can better inform that. And I, and I can't really be here to advise whether or not a study would be beneficial or anything like that. But if you have concerns, like I can point them in the right direction.
Yeah, no, that's fine. And my follow-up would be that, you know, on the local government end and how we can do better. Are there lessons learned from the Westold situation last year that we can improve on so it's better communication? Because it didn't seem, and I don't, I don't live down there, but, but it didn't seem like it rolled out in a positive way. Maybe that's something you could let us know on how we're going to better communicate with our residents.
Yeah, so, so Jay Hallid and I went down to Victoria a month or so ago. And it was during, it was for a provincial drought debrief, considering that 2023 was so bad and there are so many learning experiences from that, bad as far as like the drought is concerned, not the management of it. There were presenters that presented about kind of Westold and kind of learnings that came out of that. It was almost a, like a tale of two watersheds. They had watershed, well watershed that they had previously heavily engaged with, that people were well aware of concerns. They had worked with them in the past, those relationships have been built and they had that engagement. And whenever it came time to actually do these minister orders, people were almost anticipating that this was coming. Like as a compliance enforcement officer drove down the driveway, they'd say, is it, are you shutting the water off? Is it finally here? Right? Because everyone knows whenever drought is occurring, right? It's those management kind of triggers that people can be surprised about. So then you have the Westold situation where people were a little bit more surprised. There wasn't the, there were some learnings about sharing more information early, about more engagement that could occur. And that's kind of what informs our plans for this year is that we're trying to engage as early as possible. We're trying to reach out to the bigger users as early as possible to develop those relationships. Say that we, we don't want to mimic that kind of situation again. There are learnings that came out of it and we learned a lot from those situations as well. Like we weren't, we learnt at it the same way that a local farmer would. We saw it on YouTube, right? And we thought that it's a, it was a very one-sided demonstration, but it was also a really good learning opportunity to see how people felt, how people feel that they were brought into actually potentially coming up with a solution. And the reality for me is people didn't feel part of the solution there. They felt like government was telling them that this is the way it's going to be. And they were cut off and it was affected livelihood, et cetera. And we need to get people part of that conversation well ahead of time. Get people involved.
Any other questions in chambers? Castle Lozner?
My question about the communication piece, you folks are here now and you're sharing with us. So, you know, you're anticipating another extension of the drought this summer. So what should we be doing then?
It's really difficult because you don't, there's not a lot of water storage here. You're not really dealing with the reservoirs. That's one question that we had with some of the larger irrigators in the area too, that are pulling from the Natchaco. There's very little they can do to prepare for drought. Their crops are in, they, they plan to irrigate as much as they're legally allowed to according to their water licenses. They're, they're not dealing with reservoirs. They don't have storage. It's, I think it's a, for the District of Vanderhoof, it'd be about early messaging.
That's it, yeah.
It would be about if you're going to be implementing water restrictions, not waiting to the last minute, but get people used to the fact that we're anticipating a low water year and that you implement that stuff as early as possible. To get them, by the time you get in drought, you want them used to the fact that, that they're not, they can't use water like maybe they could in previous years.
So yeah, okay, get that ahead of the game.
Yeah, efficiency, you know, develop that relationship, get that messaging out as early as possible. So people aren't surprised at the last minute saying, well, why didn't I get this message three months ago?
Right, okay, thank you.
Awesome. Anybody else in chambers? Castle Vandola?
Thanks, Phil, for the presentation. This is awesome. I'm just, so we talked about the farming community and I know up in Fort St. John, they're notorious for creating these huge dugouts. And in some cases, some of the dugouts were a hectare in size, you know, and we had C and E going out there and, and dealing with that. So for some of these locals, what is, what is the legal amount of area that they can prepare for surface water to collect? So they can use it later in a, in a way to prepare for potential drought coming.
We try to promote storage as much as possible. So for people to pump water from, say, surface water sources when it's plentiful and to store it, you know, and for whenever they need it. The reality is storage is very, very expensive. And in the Northeast, it's largely driven by oil and gas. So when you get these massive reservoirs, they have deep pockets. And the, and it's a very different scenario. The local farmer can't afford to create a, you know, a million dollar dugout. And unfortunately, sometimes that's what it takes for large irrigation systems. To irrigate, for example, like four hundred fifty acres, you need around five hundred sixty thousand cubic meters. So that's like one big pivot, right? That's, that's a lot of water. And so to be able to store that with acknowledgement, that's going to be some losses through evaporation, through to the ground, et cetera. You need even more volume than that. It's not always a reality, storage. Yeah, no.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll go online to Mark Parker.
Yeah, great. Well, thanks for the opportunity. This has been good. A couple of things. I think my first one is more of a, almost a pet peeve, it's come to be, it's with the levels of drought, just the wording that's around them. I think sometimes we think we should be in a higher level because just the wording around it, like, you know, ecosystem values are likely, like impacts are likely at eleven, level four. Well, when you're in a level four, there's impacts already here, like we're feeling impacts. We know industry's feeling impacts. The ag sector's feeling impacts, the wells for all the residents are feeling impacts. I don't know how many people I spoke to, her wells are dry this year. So being in a level four, it just seems like that wording should be a little different or even at level three, that it's possible. We've realized in a level four, we're, we're in a drought and we have adverse effects. So just something I wanted to get off, Kevin and I talked about this here and there, on your moon tray. So one thing, the other piece is just on the awareness of drought and when it's happening. Last year, especially in the ag sector, pretty much in June, knew we were in a drought. The time this sort of goes through the system at the provincial level and then to the federal level, it takes months and months, especially with the federal level, to recognize the drought that we're in and the impacts of it. So is there, is that something that's going to start being recognized in an earlier state where we can say, okay, look, we are in a level four. It means this, to start to get those supports, because time we got the federal support last year on ag recovery, it was in November and it was too late. And the provincial level was, you know, it took a while as well to get any kind of support recognized. And the last piece of that is how big of area, like if the valley is in a drought, just the Vanderhoof Valley itself and the Chaco Valley area, how big does it have to be to actually get the attention of the province? Because maybe that's the case sometimes where we're, we're experiencing a bit of a drought, but sort of Williams Lake South isn't. Or, you know, Chetwood North isn't, but it's in this area.
Yeah. So there's kind of three parts to that. So the first one about like drought polygons and like, like when we're in like level four, like that doesn't really reflect maybe all the streams. It's really difficult when we're dealing with fairly large polygons when it comes to drought. We're dealing with small, medium, moderate sized streams. Some systems are regulated, some have lakes in the systems, et cetera. But you have to come up with one level that represents the whole polygon. Fortunately, but unfortunately, Waters, or the River Forecast Center does a pretty good job at letting us know their recommendations. But it's only based on streams that they have stations in, which are large and regulated typically, or have lakes in the system. So that's where we go locally and we'll actually go and we'll do observations or measurements on our indicator streams that represent these smaller to medium sized systems to, and talk to people to get our information up for the streams that we don't have any information to support. I agree with you that whenever we, so sometimes it seems we get a slow progression to a higher level of drought. Unfortunately, our, our greatest tools, whenever we're engaging with people, are to ask for voluntary reductions of usage at those lower levels. So for one to three, for example. So for this year, we know that we're in a period where we're probably going to get into drought in 2024. So it's about asking for people to conserve, to get that in their mindset, et cetera. But people are aware of this. Like when we talk to farmers, we say the, like, it looks like 2024 is going to be bad. They're like, well, no duh. Like, there's so, so in my field, there's no stone in the mountains. Like, we don't need you to send us a letter. Like, we, we need these supports and we need all this other stuff, right? And there's really no benefit. Like what we've heard is that if we send a letter and we say, yep, this is what our snow levels are like and we're going to get in drought, et cetera, and this is higher, higher risk, it goes straight into the recycling. So we're trying to kind of wrap our minds around that too, how to, how to engage with people the best that we can to, to help support them. One of the things that the province is doing to help kind of us in this effort is, so billing cycle is going annually for all of our water licenses. And they're actually going to provide early messaging whenever bills go out. So whenever you get your bill, you also get, this is the forecast for 2024, this upcoming year. As an early engagement mechanism, it'll be our job then to develop those relationships to actually go out, do this monitoring and inform that provincial, like whenever we're getting further into drought periods or into the summer and then to these higher levels. When we're getting to like level four or five and there's this higher level of management that has to occur, unfortunately, the best tools under the Water Sustainability Act are the ones we don't want to use. And those are those orders and stuff that, you know, fish protection orders, where we're closing down watersheds. We have to do economic assessments to see what the, what, if the minister is going to sign something and actually say, okay, no one can use water and we're cutting it off, like what the impact is going to be on locals. We want to do everything we can to avoid that as possible. But it's a tool in the toolbox. And I, I can't say that we'll never get to that point. Uh, other more sensitive areas where that are dealing with salmon, et cetera, down south. Uh, they've gotten there and they've used that tool. Um, right now we're not at that point yet. And it's all about, like I said, early engagement, getting people on our side, working with people and getting ahead of it.
Okay. Thank you. Do you not use soil moisture testing then? Is that, it's, you're, you're talking about water and, and the river forecast center, but the actual soil most moisture, is that not part of determining drought?
Uh, we, we don't. Um, Ministry for Agriculture and Food might. Um, and there are also other like drought models and stuff that look at forest soil moisture, agricultural soil moisture, et cetera. Uh, even local farmers in discussions with them, they don't do a good job of measuring that themselves. They'll irrigate, they'll have a good idea of how wet their soils are and what types of crops they have, but they don't really know soil content. There, there's kind of irrigating what they think they need. We have a long way to go in that kind of, you know, realm. Uh, we do use other types of indicators though, other than just stream and precipitation like flows, uh, which could be what groundwater levels are doing in our aquifers, air temperature, stream temperatures. Uh, you know, times of the year for fish, et cetera. Plentiful, but these are all like, these aren't our core indicators, but they're the ones that kind of feed uh, are understanding of what the impacts are of drought or water uses during periods of drought. Soil moisture would be in that category. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you, Mary Mootrey for the opportunity.
Hey, anybody else online have a question? Just, yeah, come back. Shirley, did you have a question?
Yes, I'm, I'm just wondering if I got lost in translation, but if the irrigators from the Natchaco, i- is it your ministry that would just make the decision that there would be no more water to them? Or is it somehow related to others like the fisheries? And I had a, a second question also. With irrigation, we seem to, to start here to me is later in the spring. Should, uh, producers be, um, uh, pushed to start a little earlier in the spring? Will that help with, with water in the soil before uh, crops get really growing?
Okay. Um, so the first one is about, uh, so our, our office is the office that issues the, um, water licenses under the water sustainability act. So if someone applies for a source and we have to consider environmental flow needs, impact to others, uh, First Nations values, et cetera. This plethora of stuff. For the Natchaco, we're not at the point right now. We're really refusing licenses, et cetera. There are a lot of streams in the Vanderhoof area we know are over allocated. Uh, we know are, um, on paper, at least a problem. And we're trying to get ahead of that in reality by maybe cancellation exercises or working with people to abandon part of their water rights if they're not using it, et cetera. Uh, so we're trying to get ahead of that. Um, but you know, if people always have a right to apply. So if someone has access, land access to the Natchaco River and they can demonstrate that they have a good plan, they can apply for a water license. And we'd consider them like, just like any other license that's received. Uh, we, we want people to have access to water. We want people to develop good crops. We want them to have almost that insurance that's tied to their property. So that they can rely on the crop every year. And because we've heard that for some crops in years, they, they don't get a yield. If they can't irrigate, there's no yield there and it's not, it's not a sustainable business for them. But providing that water is available. Um, what was the, remind me, what was the second question again? Irrigating earlier.
Ready? Yeah.
So I, I think it's important to know where my expertise or our expertise lies. And when we're, um, when we're engaging with farmers, um, it's the Ministry of Agriculture and Food would be, they'd be able to provide better guidance there. There are some upcoming workshops about irrigation, about time of year, types of systems that are being installed. Uh, there will be one in Vanderhoof here. There's going to be one in McBride and one in Prince George as well. Uh, and then we're going to also have like a drought debrief session that we're kind of planning for April right now. Where we talk more about like licensing and similar stuff that we're discussing today uh, with the local community. And if people want to be part of that, they're more than welcome to be. And, and have it like a conversation kind of base thing. The irrigating early is tricky. Um, as I mentioned, like it's important for me to stay in my lane. I, it's not, I, I have a difficult time telling a farmer that I know more about irrigating their crops than they do, because I don't. Uh, they've got that history. They, they know what they're doing. For me, it's about a water conservation. It's about considering the rights of others. It's about knowing the law and the water sustainability act, how to protect their rights and, and get them access to water. If it's, you know, if it doesn't affect the rights of other users and the flow needs, et cetera of the stream. I'm just not the right person to be telling people when to irrigate and what's best for their crops.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. We'll go to Rodney, then I have a few.
Does industry have a C in this or when there's, uh, water restrictions through through the place where we live and they also have to follow that?
Yeah. So industry would be a license holder, just like anyone else. Um, so they're, they would, they would have applied for water license. They would have received a license no different than someone irrigating. And whenever it comes time to actually imposing restrictions, uh, their impacts to that industry would be considered no different than impacts to how someone farming would be considered. Yeah. There are different types of cutoffs. So what we saw in that Westfold scenario is that the, the people, um, irrigating forage and, and other crops like that. The total volume accounted, I think it was like 90 something percent. So if they targeted that one industry, for example, they could potentially conserve much more water than if they included like berry farmers and other smaller users. So they just targeted the one industry, including, instead of including everyone and having that impact across a larger kind of user base. If for, if industry was involved though, and they're a large user and cut and, and it was a potential to like cut back their use and that reduction of their use could benefit the environment and limit the impact on other users, that'd be a consideration for sure. Yeah.
Okay. Um, I spent a, a fair amount of time on the, the drought portal. I think it's a very good tool. Most of the data points that come up are the, obviously as you mentioned before, the, the mainstream streams, right? And, and that's kind of where my question was leading to, um, the Chaco input, I guess is below Chislata Falls, the one up there. Now, on the, the data set for it, it has the minimum historical flow is 17.4. But under the current flow regime, the minimum flow is 32. So just knowing that right now it's showing 32.2 and showing in the normal 25 to 75% rain. But it's actually bang on the minimum. Is that taken into consideration? Do you make an adjustment for that?
Are you talking about for Rio Tinto's releases, like at Skins Lake and how?
Yeah. So they, they have minimum releases 32.
Yeah. So lately they've like, they're modeling in recent years. Demonstrates that if they can meet a certain minimum flow, it reduces things like ice damming and flooding, et cetera. So that's why they try to maintain around 32, 33 cubic meters a second, right through, or, or right through winter months and fluctuate to two months. Uh, what they've found over time is that if there's a fluctuation, if, so if they reduce that volume or increase it, ice will break up and then you get something like ice jamming and, and then you get all the consequence of that. Yeah. So I can't really speak to whether 20 is better than 32.
That's, that's not really my question. So what my question is, under the 97 agreement, 32 cubic meters is the minimum release they can release from the spillway. So, but right now we show that we're in the normal range of 25 to 75%, but that's an artificially high number because on a year like this, it would be less, right? I can't tell you what that number would be, but I'm sure it would be less than 32 cubic meters. Uh, do you take that into consideration? Because it's almost an artificially high number when you, when the historical low is considered 17.4. So do you see where I'm kind of coming from?
I do. And for, so the real, like the 97 agreement and everything is it's kind of set. At this point, it's nothing we consider from a year to year basis and help like make recommendations to Rio Tinto for adjustment. Um, they, they do have their minimums that are kind of set already for releases. They have to follow the summer temperature management program. They have to maintain a minimum flow in the stream. Uh, and these are bigger agreements that actually come from Victoria. So that water license would have never been issued by my office. It's a major water license. And so anytime they need to deviate from that, whether or not they increasing their pool level during a really wet year to reduce flooding downstream or, or change their minimum releases for any reason, uh, it would come from Victoria, like a conversation Victorian. Yeah.
I guess my question, dude, one slightly different way, should there be a new minimum flow set based on the current flow regime of never going below 32 cubic meters?
I don't know. And I, I think it's, it's an important consideration. Like I know we're both part of the water engagement initiative. And that's kind of the next step of that. Like we're in phase one of things that we can change under the current water license right now. Phase two are what else can we change that makes sense? That's best for the environment, best for the users, best for everything, right? And that's something that could be considered in that phase two of the process.
Uh, I, I, I'm talking slightly different. I, I'm talking, should your data set be changed? So that 32 is now the historical minimum.
But I don't know what you mean by like my data set because.
What comes off the drought portal is that?
So that's a provincial data set that, that would be informed by not only, um, so that's the agreement with Rio Tinto. That dates back to 97. That, that wouldn't have been my office. And then that's also to do with, uh, that river survey Canada data that, that, that they make essentially recommendations to us like throughout the year. So our office wouldn't be recommending minimum flow levels in the Natchaco, for example.
What he's asking is would we ever change that minimum?
Yeah.
But I think the answer is no, because at some point in time that will always be minimum. But the percentages reflect how often. So like the, like the 25th percentile will always change based on.
But if the minimum flow is 32, it shouldn't be 32 instead of 74. That's what.
Yeah.
You put that situation on the map.
So that's our new.
If you're talking about a minimum. Then it, it won't change unless you get forward.
Sorry.
Yeah.
It's probably a really good question and I don't fully understand what you're asking. So if, if you want to do a follow-up, I'm more than willing to dig deeper into it.
Sorry. Yeah. Let's do a follow-up on that one. Uh, Cindy, did you have a?
That's what you're asking, right? Like to set 32 as the new minimum, this is the new minimum level.
Cause that's the reality we're living in.
That's right. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
And so that can't be changed. Line that this is 32.
But isn't that already set through that 97 agreement? Like they, they can't release less than 32.
More for the, the data of what is normal. Cause we're in a abnormal water supply situation, but it's abnormally increased. Whereas normally it's abnormally decreased. So just.
I see what you're saying. Yep.
Uh, just knowing that, and, and, cause we know, and I'm sure you guys are, uh, aware of this, the reservoir is at a really low level, even though they've got a 73% snowpack, that's all going to be absorbed into the reservoir. And it'll be minimum flows through the summer until we get to STMP. So just thinking, uh, does, is that, uh, do you guys make adjustments for that in your drought level recommendations? Based on that kind of, uh, data as well, right?
We can look at other parts of it.
For sure. Yeah. Yeah. The Stillacros on there that's at a record low, the Stewart's on there that it's a record low. And again, the Chaco would be at record low if it wasn't a regulated system, right?
Yep.
So. Perfect. Perfect. And then, uh, my other question was around snowpack data. There's not an awful lot of data sets within our polygon. Do you guys use like Blue Lake as well? Just on the other side of the mountain? That's what we kind of, or what Rio Tinto uses to predict the nortly system. It's just slightly outside. I, again, just.
Yeah. I'm, I'm not sure what automated pillows, because it'd be like, yeah, I'm not sure what.
There's one like way up at the top end, it's a B C hydro one. And that's it.
Yeah.
That's.
Also the snow survey network online.
Yeah. Yeah. Awesome. Uh, that was a great presentation. Um, oh, Tom, did you have a question? I'll turn you back up. He's good. Okay. Awesome. Thanks. And, and I'm sure we will probably end up sending a, a follow-up letter just because there are so many questions about drought right now, right?
Anytime.
Are entering into the year three really, right? And, uh, and where that's going.
Just a like, can I have like 30 seconds? Like, is there anything like the district would be planning for this year? Like that's different than typical?
I think for the district, I think, and I'm speaking now on things that we haven't discussed, but I think we would definitely, it's a really good time for us to look at things like watering restrictions. We've got the new drought scales out. We've just purchased Northside Water, so we now control all the utilities within town apart from private wells. So that's, that's a new level of, of control that we, we haven't had in the past, right? So I think it's a good time to review it and, and look what those policies should be. And I think that'll, uh, inform it. And there was a lot of information in the response plan, right? And, and so going forward from that, seeing what we can do to, to be part of the solution.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks again for coming. That was, that was really good.
I should say, when we get money, we'll, we're, we're going to replace the old four level drought system with the new six level.
Nice.
After all the work you've been managing, putting that thing back.
You know, literally the week after we put it up, they said, yeah, we're going from the old four system.
Thanks. Thanks, everyone. Have a good meeting. Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark. Thanks.
Yeah.
Our drought, our watering restrictions start June. Michelle and I on our own moved it up a month.
Yeah. Easily start to put that conversation.
For sure. And, and then tying it in with the language within here, right? And.
I hear what they're saying. People know, people understand. Not until you really, really tell them.
Okay. So moving on. Council conference attendance. We've got NCLGA coming up. We've got Minerals North. We've got a number of things. We've got FCM in Calgary. And just, um, and thanks, Council Lozay for, for kind of pushing me on it. And I think it's good that we have a discussion of what is it worthwhile sending, especially to NCLGA? Is it a full court press or do we send a couple of people to represent the district or? I don't know. I've even heard questions about our membership, uh, come from the group that right now is NCLGA doing what it should be doing for us, right? And I'll open it up to the floor for that discussion. Use your mics, because we've got Tom on.
I, I know for, for me, for this last year, going to the NCLJ was super important as from a first time counselor kind of, uh, attending it, uh, I learned a, an awful lot, but I can see, you know, if you've been to one, you've been to, you know, you know, you've been to one or two, then that's probably, it's going to be same old, same old kind of a thing. And I could see where we, you know, would probably look at the, our attendance that, you know, we may not necessarily have to have everybody there. You know, we may not necessarily have to have everybody there.
Council Frankel?
And I'm probably to the point.
I, sorry, I missed you. I got Cindy instead.
I'm probably at the point where we need to have a good discussion uh about attending. Uh, NCLGA. Uh, I mean, it's great that we have an organization, but. That represents the north. And not to knock volunteers, uh, it it's difficult, but um. I don't know where we are in 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 the world of advocacy anymore, uh, when it's. NCLGA or, you know, I think UBCM is still the go to. The province goes to the to UBCM all the time for advocacy. Sometimes they don't listen to UBCM, but so I would want to have a fuller discussion at a later date about what. Are we members of? And, um, you know, I think it's important uh to attend minerals. To attend, and then that could be uh AMBC down in Vancouver. I just think that those are important things. Or if it's an agricultural seminar of British Columbia, I think we need to attend that because. Those are ways that we we can push our advocacy into those in into those sectors. So. I'm not knocking anybody. I'm just thinking we need to have a good thought. About what we attend. Other communities limit their spend expenditures to five thousand dollars per per councillor member. And I don't think any of us reach that because we have a separate UBCM one. Uh, but I I would really like to have maybe a list of ones that we can, but NCLGA. Uh, I didn't, I don't.
Sorry, no, I'm looking at our 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 um, our drive where we have all the conferences, Tom. Do you want to know which ones you go to annually?
Uh, okay, I didn't see that.
No, it's not. Sorry, it's not on there. It's on, it's just on the server.
Uh, no, 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 I I I'm good. Uh, don't need to do that.
Okay, sorry.
I, but maybe we could attach it and have another discussion uh when it's attached and then.
Yeah, and I and I guess my thought is that. I I agree and and you know, I I went last year to NCLGA and I'm I'm good. I I I think I don't need to go now for a few years. I think it's good to have representation there though. Um, and like you said, at Minerals North and. And um, some of the other ones, but I and and I don't, I think it's important that. You know, there's a, we're all at UBCM. I think that's a really important statement and and important advocacy for community and. Um, but I I personally don't think we all need to be going to all of them, so.
No.
To kind of make a.
Yeah, I think I'm just going to repeat a little bit of what everybody else has said in turn, but I want to switch it up a little bit. We were talking about a resource in water and I think our other resources, time. And when a lot of us are splitting our time between a bunch of different passions and focuses on council. And we're also watering ourselves down and and that focus that we have. And I think. I I'm I'm glad this has come up because it's the first time in a lot of years I've been on council where I say, you know what, we don't, we can't make everything. And we need to focus on the things we're going to get the best bang for the buck. And we should have that discussion around the NCLGA at some point, say, okay. What what's coming up that that we really need to be part of this organization for? It's not about being, I don't think we're pointing the finger, we're not complaining. We're just going, we have limited amount of time. So that's how I want to look at it. So because that's how I feel my personal situation is. And I don't, I I also don't want people on council who are putting in a lot of time feel guilty because they can't go to NCLGA or one of those other things. But if we have representation from people who are really committed to those, then I think we should continue doing those things.
Okay, we'll go to Tom now. You muted. You're still muted.
How do I sound now?
Yeah, you're you're loud and maybe not clear, but you're loud.
Um, probably not very clear, to be honest. Um, I want to actually concur with a lot that was said, except for one thing. Um, I too enjoyed going to the last one. Um, however, that last one just kind of got me into the flow of things at the NCLGA and. I think we should look at not sending the entire crew to everything, but if I'm inexperienced and I'm still going to use that word for myself. Counselor uh could attend something with an experienced person who knows how these things go and that sort of thing. Um, I think it would be more valuable that way, but I agree with everyone that we shouldn't send everyone to everything.
Yeah. No, that's that sounds good. And and I think we're we're in agreement there. So I think. NCLGA has registration opened yet?
I don't know.
No, they're having issues, right?
So, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think if we had a list of things and prioritize them as to who is more most. Um, able to go and and most capable to report back. Um, if we had a list of all the things and then divided it up in priority, I think that would be a good thing.
Yeah, our policy.
Go ahead. Oh, sorry.
Our our policy on FCM is only when it's in the west.
Yeah.
So it is in the west this year, so. But we should take a look at the agenda to see uh what they do, because they usually focus in on three, three issues. It'll be housing, infrastructure and. Something else, healthcare, but that's what they'll focus in on, so.
Do you have a maximum amount we can attend to FCM or?
I thought I may be mixing this up with my previous life, but I thought every councillor got to go to. FCM at once in their term.
Yes.
Yeah.
And the term's four years, so that's two year.
Yeah, but again, I think if we prioritize, didn't we prioritize the west?
I don't know who's gone to FCM, maybe Jerry.
Jerry.
Once, maybe twice, maybe. So I I I think now that we're talking about FCM and and the three things that you just mentioned, those are key to our community, right? So if we're going to reorganize where we're going to, to me, I think it's prudent to look at it, okay, reorganized, you save money here. Maybe this year you send more than two people. Like, if it's if it's things that really are connecting with some of our major uh pieces that we're focusing on. Because when we're looking at the others, when none of these things are really applying to us right now, then we can retract from there and go over here. Anyway, just a a thought when we think about. Policy around, say if it was only one person or whatever, you kind of go, man, this one we need to rethink.
Yeah. That's good. So for an action item, we'll make a list of upcoming conferences. You have a list.
Do you want, you don't want to talk about it now?
I'd be just shooting from the hip, but if you wanted to shoot from the hip, I'm I'm always good at that.
It's just the FCM, maybe you could decide what FCM, just before the hotel sellout.
Yeah, when is it?
It's June, this is right around B C Community Forest Association. Or Calgary.
Well.
FCM is June sixth to ninth.
Yeah, i- if we're just putting it out there like that, I wouldn't mind going to FCM. I think it would be. But I think being so close, you know, a couple more people could be appropriate, right? Like. No.
So would this be a place for the newbies to attend, do you think?
Yeah, I haven't been to one yet and I'm in year thirteen.
So we'd all be newbies.
Yeah, and.
And I and I appreciate the comment and I know, and I really appreciate what David said too about, uh. You know, as in, you know, went to NCLGA for the first time, but with all due respect, Tom, uh, you're part of council and and you're not new. And so, uh, I I I I hope we use the term.
Thanks for calling me an old one.
And and uh, and we're all on this together and I don't, and I don't want it to be a new versus old thing. It's, it should be who should should be going. So I hope you take that the right way. But it's, that's exactly it. Like, we're all on council, so. How about on this one?
What if people get hold of myself and Willene directly in the next day? Okay, expressing your interest and why you.
Yeah, is there an agenda that's all, because it would be good to allocate, see what's on the agenda and and.
I can send you one.
And then just uh, and then give it a little time.
If it's housed, if it's housing, I should go.
Yes, you should.
No, but that's how we did the housing one last year. Yeah, like that makes sense.
Somebody's going to get the volunteer to go to McKenzie.
I will send it out right now.
Sounds good. So can people do that in the next day? Send myself and Willene and email them, then we'll take it from there.
Could I add? If you've got a list, can you just send the list out to all seven of us? And then that way we can put a ticky box beside each one.
Now we can put a tiki tack.
And then and then try to commit everybody. I mean, UBCM is UBCM, but. We should split it up. So, you know, Tom's going to go to NCLJ, he's going to NCLGA and. The sixties are good to you, Mr. Bowman.
Okay, so Willie's going to send out the list of conferences, we've ticky box all of them.
Yeah, and then then figure it out.
Right now I'm sending just FCM and then tomorrow, because I don't know the dates, I know the months. Send the rest of them out tomorrow morning.
Okay, sounds good. Um, okay, five point three B C Hydro Public EV Charging Network. So that was, they came back with wanting to do the four. Uh, stations to the north of what we currently have.
They'll settle for that.
They'll settle for that. Uh, one thing that that kind of flagged today is that we haven't had a discussion with the Historical Society. So I talked to their their president and then uh Ken's going to go to the AGM, which is tomorrow and uh present that information to them. Can, so in respect of that. And I I get this is political because they want it done before an election. Um, but can 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 have that and you have that conversation so it doesn't look like. We've made the decision before the historical so- society has seen it, or do they?
I needed to ask a question too. I am past president of the Historical Society. Should I go tomorrow night or not?
If you have COVID, I suggest you stay home.
Yeah, no, I I could attend this way as well.
Yeah, would they want? Have input or? Here, I got it.
They want to have input.
I think, I think, I think it's prudent to ask for their input, so it doesn't, people don't like things to happen to them. Say, right, as we all know. So I think if we just say, hey, this is what's happening, this is the discussion that's going on. It's likely this would be the four stations would go in this area if if it was through. I think. Um, they need to be forewarned of that, so they can maybe bring up any any concerns. Um, because right now it's not a for sure thing, but this this is a likely scenario, right? This is what they would like to see at minimum.
But there is also the discussion, is this where we want it?
Yeah.
It might be that we want it.
No, but we can say, but I'm just saying, yeah, this is what's going, this is what we've been talking about. We want you to raise some issues. And if there's some major things that we haven't thought about, that's great. Well, we can listen to that, right?
Going to go to Willene next.
They're they're convinced that the the four or the eight that they originally wanted at VTCC are paved. And I keep telling her I don't think they're paved because that was a cost savings for them. Then they were going to put, um. They were going to put four floaters or something she called them. They could do at Highway sixteen park next year or the year after. Um, that are don't have to be excavated, that just kind of sit on the surface for the pull through ones that you wanted. They didn't say anything about the property where the Mattie Scott sign is on the highway. They didn't bring that back at all. And council can still pick Columbia. Council hasn't decided this is like, that's what tonight, if you want to make a resolution saying this is where we want them. And staff can go and negotiate the agreement with them.
Even if if we wanted them there, we could say, after consulting with the Historical Society or refer to the Historical Society and then it can come back to us. Even potentially, maybe could be added on a Wednesday or something.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow or Monday. We can, we can do it on Monday. They'll have the.
Okay.
No, exactly.
Gerald was here.
Would it be also? Uh, okay, uh, good to understand uh the pro, like. The, I guess, the logistics of having it on Columbia, like, would it, you you know, what kind of?
Second choice.
Uh, yeah, I agree, but I want to understand what what has to be done, like, does it have, is it paved there? I don't think it's paved either. So that needs to be paved and and who would be responsible for that? And I would like to understand that. Um, you know, I know what my first choice would be.
I can say what the agreement said.
Yeah.
So the agreement says, um, they're responsible for the day to day. Their phone number goes on it, they charge. Um, we have nothing to do except plow. And then it said had to be plowed within twenty four hours, but I sent it to a lawyer and I said, can we change that to per our snow clearing removal agree uh policy? Um, they have to be signed. I asked you if they would take eight at the VTCC, but only sign for them. And the other four are up for grabs if other people are there and want to use them and they didn't like that. Um, I guess that was about all the insurance. Uh, they need liability insurance, but we're responsible for damage. But then I said, what if a car drives into their station, falls over and hits somebody else's car? Whatever. So that I have to clarify and um. It was one more thing, but I sent it to a lawyer anyways to to read through it with what my comments for reading through it. So the only thing with Columbia is the power.
Okay.
The power drop or something.
So wherever those charging stations, we would, okay, so they would pave it, they would make sure the lots prepared properly.
Yeah, we just have to clear the snow.
And wherever it is, we'd still be responsible for those things.
They even suggested their district office on the highway. But I don't know.
Thank you.
Should we put some more thought into the Mattie Scott sign piece of property, if that's what we're officially calling it? And and I like that, it's easy in and out. And I like the point that you talked about where it's pull through. And and this is made for, this whole process is to get ready for for October in the election. Cause we fought like hell for this for how many years and nobody even wanted to listen to us. And now they're just falling over their feet to to help us. And I'm like, yeah, okay, whatever. But but I like the, I like the Madison Scott property sign, sign property.
I'll send her an email right now. She usually answers.
Okay. I just think it's a, it's a good location and and then our default might be four at DTC, but. But I I, I don't know. Uh-oh, Ken Young's going to say, I agree with you, but.
I don't agree with Brian. Though I, you know, I've been thinking about too, and and you know, having the four maybe right on the highway at VTCC and then I'm I'm. Doing something, thinking something totally different after you came with that, because to me, I'm looking at that. I drove by there, looked at it again and. I don't know, I'm just trying to figure out things coming and going. We've got different entrances and exits and like, there's, I get a trailer, like, I'm just worried. That it isn't as big as people think it is. And so I think that could be a problem, although it's 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 a great location. I don't think it's big enough. I want to think about, tell me why we can't put one in the parking lot on like the pull through ones on the side of the museum. There's a huge area there, why can't?
Oh, the back lot.
Yeah, like if you got them all ready, they see there's four there and then there's signage going and the pull throughs are right here, like it's all there. Now you've got somebody pulled in, they get out, they go to you, look, check out the museum, they're doing all those things, they're using the bathroom, walking their dog in the dog park. That's what I want. I don't want in and out on the highway and get out of town. We want them in, taking their wallets out and spending money while they're here, right? So that's just another thought, like, there's, there's other options, right?
And just another idea.
Yeah, uh, you know, for me, like, it seemed to me like Hydro is trying to push down our throat. Where they want these sites to be instead of coming to us where where we want the sites to be. And I think it should be up to, we should be telling them, this is where you're going to be putting them together. And yes, I don't really care that it's going to cost Hydro more money to install these things. It's not my problem. It's not my problem, you know, like, make it work, you know, I just don't, I don't get it. Anyway, that's my ten cents.
Last thing, I I feel getting rushed on this.
Yeah.
Um, and I think it's been maybe stated and and that's, I agree with what councillor, um, I'm agreeing with him. What councillor Vando is saying there, I I think, I think we need to, I know we don't have much time, I'd rather slow down and go, hey, there's these. I know we don't have much time. I'd rather slow down and go, hey, there's these few other areas. They only want it on the highway because it's going to get their sign up and it's because they look what we did. And maybe I'm being cynical. That's what it feels like. It's political. And we're about planning right now. Okay, what do we think's best long term? Really long term, I think we're going to hydrogen cells. But anyway, I'm, I'm just saying that I've been reading up on this, but never mind. Anyway, that's my thing is, Mr. Mayor, I, I don't think we should have to rush to please them, but I know we're under the gun.
So.
I 100% agree with Ken Young, councillor Young. I think we, this is a knee jerk reaction by the government to something that's coming up in the fall. And I think we need, need much more time to look at where we want them. That lot right across from us, right across from where they have already asked for them by Arrow. Is that Arrow's property? Whose property is that? I believe it is. Like, would that, would that not be a pull in and pull out? Excuse me, or the one on the highway, the one at the Mattie Scott area there. Those look much better to me than right at the museum.
Yeah. Okay, so just, we could go around this, I think, all night. So bring back Monday. Is that too, is that okay? So you'll talk to Historical Society?
Yeah.
We'll ask them about those other locations and why they couldn't be considered. I, I think, and you'll hear it tomorrow night, I think Sharon had really valid concerns about handicap accessible that everybody in the Historical Society is old and it is a worry.
There's not a lot there.
Yeah. Okay. So, good.
So I'm, I'm emailing her and I'm asking her about that property across the street on the corner of Highway 16 and the big lot behind the VTC.
Yeah. Okay. With that. Yeah, you should have one straight across from you there. That would be really attractive. Okay, we're not showing Rodney the best of what our council meetings could do.
On our team.